We're gonna get started with the city council meeting for January 28th, 2020. And thank you Sandy Del Rosario and Gina Wingfield and Suzie Miyamoto for the prelude music. Always does an awesome job. Okay, the city manager will be doing our invocation and the flag salute will be done by councilmember Ron. Please stand.
Would you please bow your head? Dear me Father Lord, we just, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks and the privilege of meeting and convening in this venue, the democracy of the city. Lord, we pray for just wisdom and discernment on the city council, the city staff. We pray for the safety and the protection of our residents. Lord, we also lift up all of our first responders, our police and fire personnel that are in harms way and they're protecting our great city. We ask that you continue to protect them. And we thank you for our city and continue to bless us in many, many ways. And we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards is absent. Councilmember Nigar is absent. Councilmember Schwenk?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here. All right, so right now we have presentations and proclamations. So today we have the Temecula Valley High School Golden Bears Football Team. So I'm gonna have you guys all come up here and I'll meet you down here. So we're gonna present a certificate and then take some pictures. So please come down. All right. This is a big bunch of kids here, right here. Wow. Okay. So the city of Temecula would like to recognize Temecula Valley High School Golden Bears Football Team for their outstanding accomplishment and effort in earning the titles of 2019 CIF Football D7 Champions. And, and the 2019 Southwest League Champions. This is the first time the team has won the CIF since 1992. Who was here in 1992? I was. I actually remember they were a good football team back then. So we're glad you're back. Thank you. Okay, the team was also named Temecula City Champions and were runners-up for the CIF State SoCal Regional Bowl Championship Game. The Golden Bears set a record of 12 and 3 overall and were named Riverside County Office of Education Academic Champions two years in a row with a team GPA of 3.54. So they're not only good, they're smart too. So that's good. We're proud of the team's dedication and talent and we wish them continued success in the sport of football and their future endeavors. So I would like to present this to the coaches. And then this is for the team. So who's your team captain? There you go. So that's for you guys. Okay, so if we could get some photos. So the coach is gonna say a few words.
Well, I just wanna thank everybody for coming here. These guys have had an incredible, incredible two-year run. First year we got here, we ended up 6 and 6 after a decade and a half of mediocre football. And they took that on to this next level this year and won it all. And I commend the seniors for an incredible journey. When they were sophomores, they were part of that 0 and 10 team. And for them to buy in, commit to everything we've asked them to do in the classroom and out of the classroom. I haven't seen or even heard of too many high school teams that have been able to do that in such a short period of time. So really, it's a commendation to their grit and their personalities. And I wanna add that we had 24 seniors this year and 12 of them have been offered to play at the next level. So that's a fantastic job. Very proud of them. Thank you.
I also did wanna comment, Assemblywoman Marie Waldron also presented certificates to the team for her support of our high school football. Also, I would like to present councilmember Matt Ron with his five-year service pin. So congratulations. Mary Ann usually pins it on him and I didn't think that would look good, so. Okay, so we're off to public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We have nine public comments. The first four are on non-agenda items and the second five are on the item number five.
Okay. Can we have our first?
We have a video that we'd be happy to play for you.
Hi, my name's Hunter. I'm with the city's IT department. A total of 30 minutes is provided for the members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Julie Paul to be followed by Matt Capeludo.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Julie Polly and I'm a leader in Troop 384. And I'm a merit badge counselor for citizenship in the community. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to have the gentleman that met with the mayor earlier today to help earn that merit badge. It's an Eagle Required Merit Badge. So all of these scouts are well on their way towards their Eagle, their Eagle rank. So I'm gonna have them come and say their name and rank, current rank. How's that sound? Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Schaefer and I am a first-class rank.
My name is Michael Bailey and I'm currently a Tenderfoot.
My name is Tyler Munzer and I'm currently a second class.
My name is William Hankey and I am a Tenderfoot.
My name is Joseph Burnside and I am currently first class.
My name is Owen Moleman and I am a Star Scout.
My name is Tuhan Dong and I'm a scout.
My name is Keegan Butler and I am a scout.
My name, my name is Nathan Castro and I'm a scout.
My name is William Moleman and I am a Tenderfoot.
My name is Joshua English and I'm first class.
My name is Evan Thompson and I'm a Star.
My name is Isaac Granat and I am a second class.
Hi, I'm Reese Wetznaka and I'm a Life Scout.
Hi, I'm Mauricio Kino, I'm a Star.
Hi, I'm Kayden Hahn and I'm a first-class scout.
I'm Luke Picudella and I'm a Tenderfoot.
So I just wanted to thank the mayor for being generous with his time. And the boys got to ask the mayor some very difficult questions about issues facing Temecula. And he was really gracious and so thank you again and have a good meeting.
Thank you. It was fun. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Matt Capeludo to be followed by Judy Zolfeger.
Good evening. I'm Alex's dad. I'm here on behalf of Jacob Alexander, 2017 graduate of Chaparral High School. December 3rd, 2019, dead. I'm here on behalf of Caleb Dunlap, senior at Great Oak High School. December 15th, 2019, dead. I'm here on behalf of Dylan Perez, 2017 graduate of Great Oak High School. December 17th, 2019, dead. I'm here on behalf of Alexandra Capeludo, 2017 graduate of Great Oak High School. December 23rd, 2019, dead. I just found out at least three more young people in Temecula have died since these. I'd like to read excerpts from a special bulletin that was put out by the Riverside County Sheriff's Department to Temecula Station. It says, "The Riverside County Sheriff's Department and the Drug Enforcement Administration is alerting the public of dangerous counterfeit pills killing people in our communities. Mexican drug cartels are manufacturing mass quantities of counterfeit prescription pills containing fentanyl, a dangerous synthetic opioid that is lethal in minute doses for distribution throughout North America. As of recent, the Riverside County Sheriff's Department has responded to an alarming number of overdose incidents. A number of overdoses resulted in the unfortunate death of the individual. Multiple overdoses have already occurred in the Temecula Valley." End of bulletin. "Temecula promotes itself as one of the safest cities in the U.S., yet our city has been infiltrated by dope dealers. I've been told there's a law enforcement task force of 20 people devoted to fighting this and they can't keep up. For every one dope dealer that they bust, five more take their place. These dope dealers are going to continue doing business here because our laws are too lenient and the penalties are minimal. My daughter Alex was a college student at a major university getting As in all her classes. She could be anyone's kid. Alex is dead because some dope dealer sold her a pill that illegally contained fentanyl. This is murder. Unfortunately, due to the stigma that comes with drug use, her death is classified as an overdose. In many overdose cases, authorities are able to find out who the drug dealer was. Detectives do their job and bring evidence to the DA showing who sold them the illegal drugs. Rather than charging the dealer with manslaughter or other serious charges that bring greater prison time, the DA usually proceeds with lesser charges and these dope dealers are back on the streets very quickly. I am here tonight not just to talk about this with you, but to take action. I'm asking you to help me fight this epidemic. Before I excuse myself, I want each and every one of you to look at me in the eyes. I want you to, I want you to know the eyes of a father who has lost a child. All of you have my contact information. I hope to hear from you very soon. Thank you for your time."
Sorry for your loss.
And here, here's the bulletin. That's the bulletin put out by the Sheriff's Department.
The next speaker is Judy Zolfeger to be followed by Ms. Miller.
Good evening. I first wanna thank the city council for all of your support of the Rotary Club of Temecula. With your grant this year, we were able to serve over 325 families Thanksgiving dinner. And that is one of the top 10 things that we've been able to accomplish this year. We've also, were able to send 43 high school students to Rotary Youth Leadership Awards Camp. We were able to feed over 1,500 people at our community Christmas dinner. We provided eight baby baskets in a box to some of our active military families, baby shower in a box. 40 gift cards to the Hot Team for the homeless outreach. We sent two wounded warriors to scuba diving for PSDD training. We sent 21 7th graders to Pride, which is another leadership camp for our 7th graders. We provided 35 solar lights that went to Ethiopia and allow children to be able to study at night when they weren't able to and girls to be able to go to school. We were able to send 320 families Christmas presents that were, they would never have been able to have if they didn't have the help of the Rotary Club of Temecula. And the top 10 thing, we were able to provide over 3,333 polio vaccines to people in countries all over the world to try to eliminate that disease. Your help helped us do that and the community's help is how we are able to provide this and many other things in our community. We really would like to invite you and the entire community to come out to our 10th Annual Taste of the World, which will be held this year on March 19th. It's Thursday, March 19th at Wilson Creek Winery. We have over 20 restaurants locally that are going to be giving us wonderful tastes of food from around the world. And we really hope that you all can join us and celebrate what we've been able to accomplish and help us accomplish more this next year.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Miller to be followed by Jim Dietrich.
All right, I have somebody's phone. It was sitting in the chair back here. Is that anybody's phone?
Somebody lose a fancy phone?
Yeah. Nice.
You did?
Okay. While we mourn the helicopter crash in Calabasas that caused the transition of the lives of the basketball potentials and hero Kobe Bryant, we must look at some of the highly contentious political actions that activists would have spent a lot of energy defeating, except they are grieving in South Central and Watts and across the world and cannot garner support or get the word through the media outlets. Mr. Kobe joins Michael Jackson, Jimi Hendrix, the Kennedys on Earth in popularity and in questionable circumstances in the helicopter. For those on the helicopter and their families, I am sure they would want you to continue working for improved quality of life for all people around the world. Here is what is majorly important to fight against, the California State Legislature. You to call your representatives because they are trying to pass SB 50 again. This is the third go-around. This is the unaffordable housing and deeply sponsored by developers who have placed writers on the bill that will allow them to fast-track projects with limited CEQA reviews and place large apartment towers in San Diego, Temecula, wherever, San Francisco. We must stand against this, say no. The people in South Central will be gentrified with apartments and their incredible culture in Limerick Park will be under pavement. And another issue is Trump is in nations that he doesn't belong at all, giving territory that isn't his to people who have enough, who already have enough land, and that's the Israelites. They are once again giving Golden Heights and the Gaza Strip to Palestine, more of it. There's hardly any left for the Palestinians. My Bible I grew up with, that area said Palestine. And until America arrived there, Palestinians and Israelis got along just fine. So, the word, the root word is territory, is terror. The terror of being marginally housed or not at all, of the hunger food pains of food insecurity or no food at all. This is what's going on in Palestine. The Israelis should reach out and love their brothers and sisters and put all those American-made weapons back. Send them back to America and melt them down. All right, for local issues, we have the city council coming up here. I hate to talk about Mr. Nigar when he's not here, but I will. So he won 27%.
Your time is up.
Okay, well, we have an election March the 3rd, Temecula. You've got to get up on this. We've got to get people who will stop all this development. You think Calvary gave you $50 million to do what? Put more housing in Temecula? More traffic? Less breathable air?
The next speaker is Jim Dietrich to be followed by Joshua Goldsmith.
Well, that's a pretty tough act to follow there.
Yes.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished councilmembers, thank you for hearing me. This is my third time to present before you that I'm totally against the short-term rentals that you're about to talk about. And I'm totally in favor of the proposition that you've placed before us. And I wanna thank all of you individually because I would live the nightmare for about a year. I have one across the street from me and because of the pressure that the, our wonderful police force and our parking enforcement as well as the city council. Place, they actually sold, they sold the property and it sold in a matter of days. So now our little cul-de-sac is quiet and safe again. And your honor, you mentioned something which was very important was the fact that we have people coming and going all the time. We don't even know who they are. We had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people. The same thing would happen every day, every weekend. There'd be three or four cars and before you knew it, there were 20, there were 30, blocking everything. Fights in the street. We were told by the owner that there were decibel monitors that would track that. Well, apparently they were tracking only the inside of the house, not the outside, but it was a constant nightmare. So thanks to all of you for putting the pressure on and I just pray that this resolution will pass. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Joshua Goldsmith to be followed by Jessica Obrego.
Hello. How are you do? Joshua Goldsmith here, local homeowner, daughter at MIT. I run a financial consulting firm and I am against this adoption ordinance 2020-01. You guys aren't gonna tell me who and how long people are gonna stay in my house. It's that simple. But you guys wanna get political about it. Okay, so ordinance, an environment, an ordinance of city councils of the city for Section 1506-1 to exempt from California Environment Equality Act pursuant to CEQA Guideline, Section 1506-1, which reads, "Once a lead agency has determined that an activity is a project subject to CEQA, a lead agency shall determine whether the project is exempt from CEQA." What a mouthful, trying to make everybody understand what this is. Very difficult thing. May need to delay the vote for, so that everybody understands actually what we're talking about, which I would suggest possibly doing tonight. The activity is covered by common sense exemption that CEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. The activity is not subject to CEQA. The environment, what is the environment? We talking about the economic environment? Does this vote have an impact on the economic environment? I think it does. That's why it is in this vote, why the exemption is here, because it has an impact on the environment. I don't want you to overlook that. It's a very, very important issue tonight for everyone to think about here. And I would like for a thorough understanding and for everyone to acknowledge that they've admitted this in their vote, if the vote does take place tonight. But I would encourage a delay in the vote. Side note, being a homeowner for five years, I love it here in Temecula. I decided when my daughter left for school to rent out the main area of my house for short-term rentals. Never had a problem. It's been a pleasure. In fact, I've converted some people to clients for their inheritance needs. One last snippet here is that the Wikipedia defines property rights are theoretical socially enforced constructs in economics for determining how a resource of or economic good is used and owned. The right to use the good, the right to earn income from the good, the right to transfer the good to others, alter it, abandon it, destroy it, and the right to enforce property rights.
All right, your time is up.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jessica.
Hold on, hold on one second. I want a clarification on what, on that issue that he just brought up. City attorney? No? Yes?
I would recommend continuing to hear comments on the consent calendar.
Okay.
There's still someone's phone up here. You might come get it? Okay, Mr. Mayor, as you suggested at the last meeting, we will be adhering to the three-minute timeline.
Okay, all right.
With Jessica Obrego to be followed by Alexandria.
Good morning, Mayor and the city council members. We're back in hopes to plead for the city to refrain from passing the second signature consent action number five and adopting the ordinance of 2020-1 that was voted by each one of you on January 14th. As I've mentioned, we, the Short Term Rental Alliance, have suggested many different options to mitigate the issues presented by short-term rentals. I will list a few of the suggested again. Limited amount of vehicles, two on-street, required permits, pay TOT tax, estimating a $2.1 million annually. Noise monitors, both inside and out, 24-hour hotline and roaming security guard paid by short-term rentals, surveillance in front and back of the homes, and a three-strike rolling year-or-year-out policy, just to name a few. Now, I'd like to take a quick, talk quickly about the city's strong stance against short-term rentals and provide data to prove that properly managed vacation rentals are not the issue. Understanding the city's current municipal code is a permissive one. And I quote, "Any use of non-listed in the development code is not permitted." However, with that being said, the municipal code does not state anywhere in it about renting your home at all, 365 days, 30 days, or two. In the additional code, 17 dot 01 dot 00 or 080 states, "No person shall at any premise," or, excuse me, "No person shall use any premise except as specified permitted by the subject to the regulations and conditions of this development code." The purpose of this home never changes. We have people sleeping in beds, cooking in kitchens, swimming in pools, and making memories. The exact same purpose you use for your home. In the last meeting, Mr. Ron mentioned that if we allowed STRs, we might as well allow restaurants in our homes. For the record, I would like to state that that is no relevance and it's far-fetched. We are accommodating people in our homes, just like you would for 365 nights. The purpose of the home never changes. Stu, you knew firsthand what it's like to have a bad tenant. Back in April, correct me if I'm wrong, but you had a tenant that was there for seven months. They didn't only just take the furnace, the air conditioner, the hot water heater, but they tore your house apart. We tried to look up the address to talk to your neighbors to see if they had issues, considering they disrespected your home that much, that there was a chance they disrespected your neighbors as well. But with that being said, being part of the 5% that are bad, and as you stated on Facebook, the point is not how many, one is too many. So if that matter continues, we, the city, would consider banning all renters for at least a year until you decide how to proceed. With that being said, I was informed by multiple credible sources that there have been roughly about 50 legitimate complaints for local vacation rentals in the city limits the last four years. With the average of 375 vacation rentals in the city, this equates to 136,000 nights available a year. Times it by four, now we're at 550,000 nights. With the 50 complaints, that doesn't even equate to .0001% of issues. Short-term rentals are not, and I repeat, not the problem. In addition, a comment was made in the prior meetings about a child not being able to look at the window because his foster mom. at the window because his foster mom was worried that he would see girls in bikinis in the neighbor's pool. We have 25 people speak that meeting. We had neighbors, we had business owners, we had homeowners. We also had common sense regulations that would work. However, once presented with all of this information, an eight-year-old looking in the bikini at a girl in the pool was brought up as a hot topic and a sure reason of why we should have vacation.
Sorry, time's up. I was enthralled. I didn't even notice it was on either, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Can we keep the applause back to, you know, I should have said it right from the very beginning, just go back to the hand waving, you know, if you're into it, just so we can move through this process a little quicker? Okay.
The next speaker is Alexandria, to be followed by Tammy Alvarado.
So, Tammy, could you come up towards the front, too, just so we can, you can be on deck?
Alexandria?
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council members. I'm just going to pick up where Jessica left off. In addition to this, during the town hall meetings a few summers ago, it was mentioned by multiple official city members in sidebar conversations that we, the STR homeowners, had nothing to worry about. This was just a thing the city needed to do to appease the upset neighbors, and there was no way that they would ban vacation rentals completely. The areas the question, and only leads me to speculate, that it is a strategic tactic in order to keep us quiet and silence us from speaking too loudly. We fight with something that doesn't need to be fought. Many of us have shared hardship letters with you and your staff. We, the STR Alliance of Temecula, are made up of single moms, military veterans, retirees, caretakers of our disabled family members, small business owners, local citizens who are depending on this income to provide for our families. It's very disappointing and downright appalling that you would need to, and I quote, "Protect our local citizens from this money-hungry property owners who purchase properties just to put in their pocket, put money in their pockets." We are here to offer solutions. We are here to work with the city to find a solution for everyone involved. We are here to defend our rights as property owners in the city that prides itself on old traditions and new opportunities. In addition to that, my face isn't unfamiliar to all of you, but I'd like the record to show that my name is Alexandria De Rossi. I'm a member of the Short-Term Rental Alliance of Temecula, now known as Citizens of Temecula for STRs. I'm the owner of the property located at 43932 Eldesura Place in the city of Temecula. I stand before you tonight on behalf of our organization, and it is our belief that we are deserving of an environmental impact report, also known as an EIR, as we believe that this sweeping ordinance may indeed have a substantial negative environmental impact under SEQA. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tammy Alvarado, to be followed by Erica Garabe.
Who's the second one? I didn't hear.
Tammy Alvarado, to be followed by Erica Garabe.
Okay.
Hello, Mayor and city council members. You've heard from residents speak on how STRs have affected them, and here are a few problems in the U.S. that maybe you haven't heard of that may or may have not affected our community, but do have the potential to do that. Airbnb, these are news articles I emailed all of you, so you can verify everything I'm telling you. Airbnb guest charged with sexual assault of a seven-year-old. Blood, needles, and broken couch found after a wanted sex offender was arrested while renting an Airbnb. Hidden cameras recorded with a memory card. They can stream live, the owner can watch them, and public can watch them. There's been 43 shootings, including one mass murder, and several mass shootings in the U.S. since May of 2019. These shootings have resulted in murders, injuries, and trauma to transient surrounding neighbors and law enforcement. Just this month, we've had three of them. There's been two stabbings this month in Las Vegas at a vacation rental. A nine-year-old found a pistol in a bedroom drawer when they, within 10 minutes of arriving to their Airbnb. Police often find illegal substances and guns, gang-related gatherings, drug smuggling, and launder stolen money. Former teacher has been accused of rape of a minor, and she reported that they would meet at Airbnbs. Man staying in an Airbnb went to a neighborhood park and sexually assaulted one of the neighbors. Airbnb host returns to find $20,000 in damage and a crime scene in her front yard. A man charged with human trafficking after underage girl was found at Airbnb. There is a huge emergency problem popping up brothels that sell adults and children from different home properties. Assembly member Marie Waldron says human trafficking is a growing threat throughout the region. Riverside County is considered a human trafficking artery. Riverside Sheriff's Department says it's the second-largest criminal industry in the world today and the fastest-growing. So imagine if a human trafficker was staying in an STR in one of our neighborhoods and took notice to one of our children. There is a local family that is being stalked. I emailed you the details. STRs allow domestic violence abusers and stalkers to come and go undetected in neighborhoods that they shouldn't be in, allowing them to, another avenue, to be close to their victims, learn their routines, and possibly harm them. These are commercial businesses, in my opinion, everything I've researched. I moved into a residential zone. I want to live in a residential zone. I appreciate that you, what you voted for on the 14th, because their property rights have affected my property rights.
Your time is up, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Erica Garabe, to be followed by Alma Villalobos, and then our last speaker, David May.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have attended and spoke at previous council meetings regarding the STR issue for the last two years due to living next to a short-term rental. When I started having issues, I contacted the city of Temecula. I drove to the county of Riverside office to find out what was acceptable and not acceptable in my neighborhood. From day one, I was told STRs were not permitted in the city of Temecula. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to the city residents, and I am grateful you completed your own research to come up, to come to a decision regarding this issue. You assigned a subcommittee to look into this further. You reached out to city residents, giving them an opportunity to speak and provide feedback through community forums. You have taken the proper steps to gather the data and make the best decision possible for the city of Temecula. The assigned subcommittee took the appropriate steps and presented very clear facts to all of you and the community in the last two years. The data is factual, and the growing number of STRs has continued to grow and impact our community. Any STR owner that would have contacted the city of Temecula prior to starting their business would have also learned that, from the beginning, that this was not permitted. I don't understand why we continue to see these number of STRs grow when it has been clearly communicated that STRs are not permitted in the city of Temecula. A decision was made on January 14th to add the definition of STRs and reaffirm that they're not permitted. I thank you for taking a closer look at this issue and in making a decision that is in the best interest of Temecula's residents' safety and quality of life. I ask you that you reaffirm tonight what has already been discussed and voted on. Please stand on your decision and protect our neighborhoods. Think about those that live next to the STRs. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alma Villalobos, to be followed by our final speaker, David May.
Hello.
My name is Alma Villalobos. I'm a member of Temecula community, and your decision to ban Airbnbs will affect me personally. I want to host legally. I am not a money-hungry owner. I bought my home back in 2005. I pay my property taxes. This is my primary residence. I live on an acre. In the city of Temecula, my neighbors have no clue I have been running their Airbnb for over three years. I have a super host status, and everyone who has visited has been super respectful to me and my neighbors. My son passed away, and my husband and I have been changed forever, crippled mentally and emotionally. Thanks to the Airbnb and being able to host one or two times a month, we are able to afford and maintain this home, better than any other long-term renter can or would. We have great pride in ownership, and I have invested so much money in my home to have this, to have the super host status. We have been doing Airbnb since 2017. This has given me the opportunity to make my home better and pay my mortgage without struggling. I strongly believe we need to give this issue more consideration, and I beg you not to ban, but to give it a trial and set proper regulations, so this can be a win-win situation for the city of Temecula and the proud homeowners of Airbnb. I have made a strong financial investment in this home, and if I would rent it long-term, I know the property would be affected, and as well as negative way. I believe I have contributed to the growth of our small businesses and our tourism. I have been supplying the demand, and the demand has grown, and now you want to take away with the supply. I have referred my hosts to other local small restaurants and businesses, and I'm pro-small business. The hotels, the casinos, and some wineries only benefit themselves. We, short-term rentals, benefit the small businesses. This will have a tremendous impact on all of them as well. I personally prefer to stay in a home versus a hotel room, and I know other people do, too. Some have very special reasons, personal and physical. This will impact them. Bans on short-term rentals deprive people of their fundamental rights to safely use their property as they see fit, and punish people for exercising their free speech rights to share this information. But the city of Temecula can still protect quiet, clean, and safe neighborhoods while respecting property rights and encouraging the economic flow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the last speaker is David May.
Good evening.
I'd like to take this opportunity to be clear. I am a money-hungry entrepreneur. I've earned the status of a super host over the past 18 to 20 months. I have 195-star reviews. Why? Because I am responsible, and I create exemplary experience for my guests. This is a business, and because my company embraced the opportunity to educate ourselves and to learn this business, I know for sure that we are not the persons that you're trying to protect the citizens from, based on the verbiage that I saw online. Also, since this is a business, we run it as such, and now I also have six short-term units in Mexico City, Mexico. The city of Temecula stated that because they did not have a provision within the city code means that it's automatically prohibited. How can you ban something that did not exist many years ago? Simply, simply the answer is you can't. That would be like saying, because there's no apple trees in Temecula, that all apples are prohibited, simply because we know nothing about apples. We can make pies, we can make applesauce, we can sell them to visitors that come to our city, but no, we can't do that because they're not welcome, because they have seeds and they may multiply. The cores will flood our streets with rotting and smelly odors and draw flies, and they will multiply, too. I realize that this is a little over-exaggeration, okay? But these are changing times, okay? What are we going to do next? Ban Uber and Lyft drivers? That would be another problem that I would see, because that decision would pull more impaired drivers on the road. Do we want this? No. But because if these services are outlawed, banned, or prohibited in any form, then the consequences can be extremely profound. The city of Temecula is simply stomping on individual property rights, the ability of single mothers and empty nesters, somebody like my mother, who's able to live on a limited income, and to threaten them with financial ruin simply because they are trying to hold on and get by. This is not how to protect our citizens. We attempted, as the STR Alliance of Temecula, to work with you, except for the fact that money-hungry entrepreneurs seem to be the problem. Based on what I can determine, STRs are less than a fraction of 1% of all units. However, we are being targeted by creating the housing shortage. I don't believe that to be true. This has been a problem for decades, and that has nothing to do with STRs. We are not the problem. We have stated and are willing to assist in creating a workable solution, and you just, and I'm trying not to put words in your mouth, because I know you still have a vote, but if you've already decided that people like myself are the ones causing the issue, then I realize that I'm kind of wasting my breath.
Your time is up.
Because all you want to do is squash our rights. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? That concludes, that concludes public comments. I'm the next speaker.
During this moment in the meeting, we cannot engage in substantive back and forth. I wanted to offer a brief clarifying comment.
Sure.
A few speakers had mentioned the California Environmental Quality Act in the context of the short-term rental ordinance. I just wanted to alert council and members of the public that staff, including the city attorney's office, have carefully looked at the SEQA implications of the proposed ordinance, and we've determined that it's exempt under SEQA.
All right. All right, so we're on to council reports. Do we have any city council reports? Nothing? Nothing. All right, so we're on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Mr. City Attorney, I understand you have a statement pertaining to the city manager.
I do. So, city manager Aaron Adams will not participate in tonight's discussion of the consent calendar, and he has left the council chamber while we are considering this matter. Mr. Adams' wife is the executive director of Visit Temecula Valley, which has advocated its position with respect to the short-term rental ordinance.
All right, so we're off to item number one, waive reading of standard ordinance and resolutions. Item number two, approve action minutes of January 14th, 2020. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of November 30th, 2019. Number five, adopt ordinance 2020-1, approving the amendment to Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code for Short-Term Rentals and establish administrative citation fines for illegal short-term rentals, second reading. Number six, approve appropriation to fund balance and, from services Level C landscape maintenance zones 516-518 and 520, and transfer funds to CIP project budget for expanded recycle water conservation project PW 17-29. Number seven, approve second reading with cooperative personal services DBA CPS HR Consulting for city employee development training. Number eight, approve contingency increase to the construction contract with Ortes Enterprise, Inc., for Interstate 15 slash State Route 79 South Ultimate Interchange PW 04-08. Number nine, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for pavement rehabilitation citywide, Enterprise Circle West and South, Ryder Way, and Commercial Center Drive PW Can I have a motion, or does anybody want anything pulled?
I'll move consent. Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Please vote. And that passes 3-0. All right, so I'm going to now recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meeting of the Temecula Community Service District and successor agency to the Temecula Development Re, yeah, Redevelopment Agency, and the Temecula Housing Authority, and the Temecula Public Financing Authority.
And I will call to order a Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Clerk, please note that the dais has not changed. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay, I'll go ahead and dispense with the readings. We'll move on to consent. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted with one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item 10, approve the action minutes of January 14th, 2020. Like to take a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, that passes three-zero. Director of Community Services, do we have a report tonight?
Mr. President, nothing for me tonight. I believe Commissioner Addy will have some fun stuff to present during the commission reports.
Great, thank you. General Manager's report?
Nothing further tonight.
All right, Director's report?
Nothing.
All right, seeing nothing, I will go ahead and adjourn this to our February eleventh, 2020 meeting.
All right, so I will, the joint meeting of the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency and the city council, um, I'll call that to order. Madam Clerk, we're all still here. The SARDA meeting, public comments, do we have any? All right, so we will move on to the SARDA consent calendar. Number eleven, approve recognized obligation payment schedule and administrat-, administrative budget for the period of July first, 2020 through July thirtieth, 2021.
Move approval.
I will say.
Mr. Mayor, there's one other item.
Row, where?
Item twelve.
Oh. Well, do we need to take the resolution first?
No, if you could go ahead and just read the title, it's also on consent.
All right. Approve Fifth Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement for Town Square Marketplace Development between Successor Agency and the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the City of Temecula, and the Town Square Marketplace Old Town LLC, APN numbers nine two two dash three six zero dash zero zero four, zero zero five, zero zero six, and zero zero seven. Now, I'll take that.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded? Passes three-zero. So now we're on to SARDA Director's Report, anything?
Nothing tonight.
All right. I guess that was Executive Director. You guys don't have anything?
Nothing.
So I'm gonna adjourn the SARDA and move on to Temecula Housing Authority, no meeting. We'll go back to reconvene the City of Temecula Council meeting. We have a public hearing. We have one public hearing today, so I'll read the rules. If any, or do we have any comments?
Yes, the city manager.
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I believe there is one public comment on this particular item.
Okay. So here's the rules. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support or in opposition to appro-, to the approval of the project. At this time of the, approvals at this time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only the issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or is written, or is in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Now, City Attorney.
City manager Aaron Adams will not participate in tonight's discussion of this item and has left the council chamber while it is being considered. Mr. Adams' wife is the executive director of Visit Temecula Valley.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to provide the staff report at this time.
Please.
In 2005, the city council, with unanimous support of the lodging businesses in the city, established the Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District per the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of 1989, implementing a two percent assessment on the room rents for the lodging businesses. In 2009, with unanimous support, again, the rate was increased from two thou-, from two percent to four percent. In 2015, at the request of Visit Temecula Valley, otherwise known as VTV, the city council adopted a resolution establishing the Visit Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District pursuant to the 1994 Act, continuing the assessment at four percent with a five-year duration. The activities for the renewed district benefit the participating lodging businesses by increasing tourism and marketing Temecula Valley as a tourism destination. The term of the existing assessment will expire on February twenty-ninth, 2020, and VTV, supported again unanimously by all of the lodging businesses in the city, has requested that the city council renew the district for a new five-year term. Upon renewal, the existing four percent assessment will continue. On November twelfth, 2019, the city council adopted a resolution declaring its intention to renew the existing district. On January fourteenth, 2020, the city council held the requisite public meeting to receive comment. No public comments were received at that time. It is therefore recommended that the city council tonight conduct the public hearing, and assuming a majority protest is not received, since there is unanimous support by the lodging businesses, adopt the resolution re-establishing the district and approving the related agreement. And that concludes staff's report, and unless there are any questions, Mr. Mayor, you're welcome to go ahead and open the public hearing. We do have one comment.
All right, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing for the item number thirteen.
And our one and only speaker is Victor, and I'm not sure about the last name, but I'm guessing there's only one Victor in the chamber right now.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, city council members, and city staff. I'm Victor Morgan-Roth, general manager of Embassy Suites Hotel. This is Mike Feeley, he's general manager of Temecula Creek Inn. With one hundred support for the past thirteen years from the city of Temecula hotel industry, we request your continued support and approval of our five-year assessment district for 2020 through 2025, effective March first, 2020. As hotel partners in the city of Temecula, we continue to build strong working partnerships and are committed to driving sales and overnight business to Temecula. As one of the top industries in Temecula, in 2019, the hotel industry generated over fifty-eight million dollars in lodging revenue, up seven point two percent over last year, and welcomed over one point three million overnight guests in our hotels, up five point three over the previous year. Our industry continues to maintain a positive outlook for 2020 and will continue to be extremely competitive with rates and product offerings. Our hard work and commitment as an industry is making Temecula Valley, Southern California wine country, a world-class extend-stay destination is our top priority. We will continue to work diligently to keep our customers visiting and to offer great reasons to stay longer. VTV continues to develop very strategic and targeted campaigns while leveraging the new media opportunities that includes all social platforms, digital placement, and new media product integration. We will leverage Temecula's special events to grow our leisure market and encourage visitors to stay longer, while continuing to focus on the top markets for Temecula in order to increase our need periods, including midweek business, small and large groups, and market to both domestic and international visitors. As a lodging district, we are committed as leaders in growing our Temecula businesses, with VTV celebrating fifteen years as an organized tourism marketing district and reaching our goals of three point three million visitors and generating over a billion in traveler spend, the best is yet to come, in our destination over the next five years. On behalf of the VTV and its board of directors, we would like to thank you very much for supporting our efforts and your partnership in the tourism industry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for what you do.
Thank you.
Doing a great job.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments. You're welcome to close the public hearing and either have a council discussion or ask for a motion.
All right, I will close the public hearing. So do we have any discussion?
Nothing on my end.
Nope.
I'll move the item.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Passes three-zero. All right, so now we're on to item number fourteen. Oh, no action. Commission reports. Do we have any commission reports?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Nothing from planning commission.
Jeez.
Okay, I'll, um, I'll have a little report.
Right.
We'll do a report tonight from community services. I'm just very honored to be representing our commission tonight, our Community Services Commission. And before I get to the actual highlighting of a couple of events that we're gonna be having next month, I'd like to, number one, just again, talk about what an honor it is to be sitting in tonight and representing Community Service Department, which time and time again just reflects the spirit of our city and the excellence and the leadership and family modeling that goes on in that department. Number two, I'd like to thank city council again and staff for supporting one of my areas of interest and fun, which is bicycling and the building of the pump track. I know it's been closed for a while for improvement, improvements, but the joy and excitement it's brought to, from children to seniors. I can say seniors because I know I've tried the pump track, and so we know at least somebody of the age of sixty-five has tried it. So I want to thank you again for that. And I want to thank you for this reason. I think what you exposed by creating this new fun aspect of one of our amazing parks is that you exposed that we are truly a bike community with, with the use that we're seeing of that pump track. So I'm supposed to have a slide up, and it's not up, so I'll go ahead. Oh, there it is. Little slide. So this month, we have a couple of great things coming up, you know, and thanks, Mayor, for the theme of fun, because, you know, we are the fun department. But sometimes we get lost in this, this thing that fun is, it's kind of frivolous, right? It's, it's, fun is significant, it's important. And I'll go ahead and do my Robert Shaw quote. "We don't stop playing because we grow old, we grow old because we stop playing." And fun is significant. And, you know, sitting here tonight and listening to our community members and, and life is going on, and there's some really heavy things that go on in our lives, but if we can remember to share fun with our neighbors, you know, with our families, we can make a lot of great changes. Along the thi-, the theme of fun, we have these two great events this month. We have the, first of all, I want to highlight the second Saturday program that we put on. And this month, it's, it's celebrating Lunar New Year, specifically Chinese New Year, where you, you're able to attend and experience this, this world culture with complimentary refreshments, food of that culture, crafts, activities, live entertainment. At this activity, there will be a performance that will include dan-, the Dragon and Lion Dance, folk music, children's readings, calligraphy demonstrations, and presentation of Chinese dress represented all the way back to the nineteen twenties era. So some pretty cool things going on at that event. And we do that every second Saturday with different cultures. So, so, so important for us to, you know, get out and, and, and educate our community about other cultures and be able to see things, you know, in a little different, different light, and know how other peoples, people are perceiving things. Along those lines, we also get to celebrate the diverse cultures in America. So we have on February twenty-ninth, American Black History Event, which is just gonna be a spectacular entertainment event hosted by Grammy, Grammy nominated Yves Evans and Grammy award-winning producer Kamu Kenyatta. And one of the entertainment events that night is the People's Choir of the Voices of Our City, based in San Diego, which is a choir that includes unsheltered people in their choir. So, you know, we've had some great success with our HOTS program here. So there's another aspect to that night with these un-, unsheltered people coming in and performing for us here at our Black History Celebration. So really, really big month coming up in February, and a lot of fun to be had, and thank you for the time.
Awesome. Any other reports? Okay, so on to city manager's report, or safety report, I'm sorry. Captain Zach.
So I brought some statistics for you, some of our information. I want to make sure that what I provide is valuable, so if there's something else that you want me to present at these meetings, or some other data you want, please let me know. Now, this is, the first slide here is our December report, goes over our calls for service and files pulled by deputies in the field. Sixty-nine hundred and seventy-one during the month of December, twelve hundred and seventy-one traffic citations, a hundred and sixty-six parking citations. Our traffic investigation investigative deputies investigate eighty-seven traffic accidents, ninety DUI investigations with forty DUI arrests. Our commercial enforcement deputy did twenty-six citations specifically related to commercial enforcement issues. We received seventy-three calls for service on the loitering and panhandling, and we conducted twenty-nine outreach-specific operations. This next slide is a 2019 year-end report. Calls for service for us, file numbers we generated, just in the city here, seventy-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven. Traffic enforcement statistics issued fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five traffic citations and made four hundred and forty DUI arrests. Some summaries of our special teams enforcements. Felony arrests, two hundred and fifty-three, a hundred felony arrest warrants were served, eight hundred and six on-site misdemeanor arrests, six hundred and fifty-nine misdemeanor arrest warrants were served. Our investigative bureau was assigned five hundred and twenty-one cases during the year. They closed four hundred and seventy-five of those cases. The rest will continue into this year. Mall stats, they had three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four calls for service at the mall, fifty-nine felony arrests or filings with the DA's office, and four hundred and eighty-two misdemeanor arrests or filings. Our volunteer stats totaled twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-one hours of volunteer service just on police matters. Moving on, I wanted to bring your attention to the opioid epidemic, not specific to the city of Temecula, but our nation. Opioids are a class of drugs that include heroin, oxycodone, hydrocodone, codeine, morphine, fentanyl, drugs like that. They bind to receptors in the brain, activating the hormone dopamine, which create a feeling of euphoria, or what we call the high, highly addictive. I put all this information on the slide for you as well. Approximately eighty million Americans are said to be using these, either illicit or prescription, abusing them. We believe the number to be low. Approximately a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five Americans die every day from some type of overdose related to opioids. Eighty thousand drug-related deaths in 2017, seventy-five percent of those opioid-related. Speaking specifically to fentanyl, fentanyl is the synthetic opioid that is a hundred times stronger than morphine. Morphine is very strong, a barely visible amount. We threw a penny up there on the slide, the little teeny bit of white powder to the right of the penny is all the fentanyl it takes to kill you. Once it becomes airborne, it becomes a real problem, becomes a real problem for anybody that's around it, first responders, or medical staff, or the public. Fentanyl's been the main culprit in the increase of overdose deaths, because it comes, they, there's a counterfeit pill normally, right? Comes in a counterfeit prescription-type pill. Instead of taking it orally, where your body can metabolize off some of that fentanyl, it's being crushed up and smoked or snorted, because it doesn't have the digestive system to basically reduce some of the fentanyl, we're having the overdoses, which we've read about, and I've shared some of our Narcan saves. If you don't get the Narcan, you may not make it. Ingesting it is, is, you're more likely to survive than if you snort it, smoke it, or shoot it. shoot it. Currently, the Mexican drug cartels are building fentanyl into their counterfeit pills, because it takes a little bit, goes a long way. They can make a lot more pills with a lot less fentanyl, but it's very dangerous when our residents get ahold of these fentanyl-based pills, and it's killing them.
I believe we have a question or two? Did you have something?
Yeah, just, just quickly, since we're, we're on the subject of public safety right now. The gentleman that spoke earlier today, if we could reach out to him and set up a meeting with staff along with law enforcement, but, but also it occurred to me that, you know, part of this issue, as we're developing the agenda for our future subcommittee meeting with the school district, if we could add this as a, as a topic as well? Thanks.
I did have a question about the DUIs. So, do we have any data, since you're data-driven? Do we have any data, where are we getting these DUI, or is it all over, or is it concentrated around certain places?
I don't know, but I can find out.
Yeah, I'd be very curious.
It would be very easy for us to pull that data, and I can get that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so now, city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. Tomorrow morning at 5:30 in the morning, we will be conducting our annual point-in-time homeless count in concert with Riverside County. We have about 20, 25 volunteers. I know yourself and Supervisor Washington will be touring the entire city with 10 to 15 deputies. Just to point out to the community, in 2018, our, our point-in-time homeless count revealed, we had 66 individuals identified. In 2019, that did go down to 59 individuals. So, the purpose of tomorrow's exercise is to create a benchmark, and then obviously we're, we have a lot of resources dedicated to helping those that, that want help. So, hopefully we'll continue to see the numbers move in the right direction, but we'll be taking that census tomorrow morning. Related to council member Ron's request, absolutely, we have this on our radar to discuss opioids as well as vaping in the school district, and we have a joint meeting scheduled next month, and I think this is a totally appropriate topic in concert with public safety, both police and fire, to discuss this epidemic and education and everything that goes along with that. And then, lastly, Mr. Mayor, I know you're planning to adjourn tonight's meeting, but many of us had the privilege of working with June Greek, who was the city of Temecula's first city clerk, served us incredibly well. She passed earlier in this month in upstate New York, and, and we're just thinking of her and her family at this time, so thank you for that.
Right, thank you. City Attorney?
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. All right, so like Aaron was saying, we're going to conclude this meeting by journey in the, a journey in the memory of the first Temecula city clerk, June Greek. We're adjourned.